I turned light on. I guess we're ready, right? Is it time?
All right.
It's right on time.
Right on.
All right. We will call to order the meeting of the Town of Signal Mountain Town Council. We have a special call meeting to start off, so we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a moment of silence. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Elizabeth Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Vicki Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Gardner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suzanne Murdoch.
Here.
Mayor Charles Haas.
Here. All right, we don't have any minutes to approve, so do we have any citizens who'd like to address the council? Okay. We have two resolutions. The first is a resolution authorizing the town manager to award a contract to John Kilgore Heating and Air for the amount of $39,860 as the lowest and best bid for HVAC replacement at the Town of Signal Mountain Library. Does everybody have a chance to read about that issue?
I did. Make a... Oh, go ahead. I'll second that.
All right. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
I really appreciate the Library Foundation, once again, for stepping up and making up the difference in what's budgeted versus the actual cost of this. Very appreciative to the citizens.
Yes. All right, well, thank you for that, and we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next resolution is a resolution authorizing the town manager to execute a memorandum of agreement between Town of Signal Mountain Water Utility, SMWU, and Walden Ridge Utility District, WRUD, to establish an additional emergency water source for the benefit of both parties. I understand we had a revised agreement, right? And I didn't... That came late in the day, I didn't have a chance to see it. So what were the changes from the original agreement?
Not fault as for that.
It's all right. It happens.
That was my fault. So the changes basically take it back to the original agreement that we had discussed in our last, I guess, the last meeting where we discussed the agreement. We kind of settled on what we liked. We sent it back to Walden Ridge. They brought back some changes after working with Perry on that. We both parties, both Walden, myself, you, Perry, we all agreed that we needed to maybe take that portion out. Let's go back to the original that we had all looked at initially and focus on the project. So this MOA essentially focuses on the ARP grant itself, project itself, the agreement between the two parties on how it's going to be financed, what work is going to be done, who's going to be responsible for that, as well as what happens if, for some reason, the grants did not come through. One of the important changes that Perry did add is that both parties anticipate entering into a further agreement in the future. That further agreement will be for the water purchase agreement that spells out the rates that we're going to purchase at in that emergency case. Also timeframe, you know, how long the repairs need to be. If we are in emergency, if repairs go a certain amount of time, we'll revert back to that agreement. So we definitely need to work on a purchase agreement that spells out, you know, further along. This MOA is focused on the project and the funding and the ARP grants. The details on who's going to flush lines and that sort of thing can be settled. Once the project... Or we can start working on that when we want to, but what I wanted to focus on in this is the actual grant process and the construction itself.
Was there a concern that that would slow the process down if we had to get all the other parts agreed to? I'm not sure why we would have taken it out if we had an agreement already. Do we not have an agreement?
So a lot of...
Can I address, please, please, there's a specific question. What they had put in was just repairs will be, if they're not made in 30 days, then the utilities will refer to the water purchase agreement and the terms and conditions set forth within it. Well, there hadn't been any discussion, any water purchase agreement yet.
Okay.
They also had a provision that if there was a need for... If the need to increase the rates was present, then either party would just notify the other party of the 60... And the rates would increase within 60 days. No discussion about negotiation. Those kinds of things, we felt like needed. There was no discussion about those. Those items were just put in by WRUD without any discussion. And I think the thinking was we needed to get something in place, some sort of agreement to get started to get the grant request started.
All right. Yeah, thank you. That's what I was wanting to know. And I guess completing the project is only half the battle here. It does them no good to complete the project if we don't have an agreement on the terms of the usage, so that they'll... They don't have any kind of upper hand just because we've completed the project.
Sure. And both parties are aware of that situation and that further discussions have got to take place. But let's focus on this and let's focus on getting the grant process started so we can move forward. The really need is to, you know, to do that. I've been in discussions with WRUD already on, you know, getting our purchase agreement worked out so we can start working on that as well. Both parties are motivated, we both want to work together, so I'm sure we can find common ground there. But for this MOA, it was important to focus on certain aspects of it instead of the others.
Okay.
I'd just like to thank you for the time that you've put into this and the leadership that you've shown in advocating for our town and then also just the vision that you've had for the project and really been able to get down to brass tacks. And so, thank you so much.
I would love to make a motion to approve this.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. While we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nope. All right, that passes. That's...
Can I make a motion to suspend the rest of the agenda?
You sure can.
All right.
Second.
Yeah, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No? All right. So that special meeting is now at a conclusion. Thanks for everybody participating. Now we have the regular meeting. It's the work session for the Town of Signal Mountain. We've already called to order and done our pledge and invocation. We can do the roll call for this budget or work session.
Councilmember Elizabeth Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Vicki Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Andrew Gardner.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suzanne Murdoch.
Here.
Mayor Charles Haas.
Here.
All right. Again, we don't have any minutes to approve. Do we have citizens who want to address the council now? All right. We don't have any resolutions or ordinances. We'll start the discussion out. Before we do that, I just want to dedicate the meeting to my wife, whose birthday is today.
Aww.
Missing it. But we celebrated last night, so she knew this was happening. Do we have somebody here live for this Zoom presentation? Or is it a scheduled? All right, is that scheduled for right now?
It's scheduled for 6:15.
Okay.
It's 18:15. I took that as a...
Old habits die hard.
Elaine, while we're waiting, I've got a story from earlier today. We're rolling out a new software, kind of back of house. One of the many changes is that... Okay, nevermind. By the way, we didn't mention, thank you for the bugs, to the water department. Appreciate that.
Hi, Michael.
Hi there.
We're glad you're here.
I'm glad this works. Yes, we can.
Okay, well, do you want me to just jump in or...
Sure. Yes.
Oh, you should see a purple screen that says CHAMP over here. I've done everything correct.
Yes.
Yes.
This is just a quick overview of what CHAMP is. I've been with some of your staff at CHAMP Bar Conference, and they suggested you guys might be interested in this. So I just put in a little something to just kind of walk you through in a second. Who the heck CHAMP is, what we do, all that good stuff. And it's getting a little bit crazy in here. But my expectation is that after this meeting, you can direct this to what you're most interested in or what's the best features for you, should you want to proceed and go forward. So first and foremost, let's talk a little bit about who the heck we are. So CHAMP's based in Nashville, Tennessee. We've been doing this now for about 17 years. So we've been doing it for quite a while. And our focus is entirely on you small and mid-sized. We do school boards and that's it. We don't street churches, we don't do any other types of events. It's all strictly focused on getting your work. And everything is built in-house, so this is from the metal hub. We're not outsourcing something, we're not branding something. We own it, box, stock, and barrel from the metal hub. And like I said, we're based in Nashville, so we're just up the road. And everything we do is also cloud-based, so that means there's no software, there's no smartphone, there's no seat licenses. Your staff can do this from anywhere. With pandemic, we found that to be super helpful because folks were in different places and they could still run meetings, they could still order, etc. So there's three core products and services that we offer. On the services side, we have CHAMP Agenda, and that's where you're able to build your agenda, as well as your packet, your public notices, your bits. All of that is bundled into CHAMP Video, which is the second service. CHAMP Video allows you to streamline as well as record your meetings. It doesn't... You don't have to streamline. Some folks just do on-demand, some folks just do live. The idea here is that you can do both. And so those services combined together is everything that we offer as a service. And then there's a third component, which is the camera. And so with the camera, that's where you're able to one-time purchase cameras, microphones, fixtures, whatever you need in order to accommodate your meeting space so that you're able to stream your meeting or etc. And each of these also have little add-ons. So for example, for CHAMP Agenda, we have digital voting. And digital voting allows you to capture your votes in real-time on a tablet, a phone, a computer, wherever you deem necessary. And there's some other things that we don't have to go into which detail on. But if you're interested, we can, of course, pair it up. I like to start with a real-world example, and today's a good day because we have a lot of activities. So let's go ahead and pick on Spring Hill first. So I'm going to come over here. Window, second. There we go. All right. So now I'm on Spring Hill, and if I scroll down, I'm on the video tab. So on your website, you'll create a weekly event page. They did theirs right up here under video. If I scroll down, we see the live stream writing. And they're getting where you stream live. We'll see if they turned it on yet, or not. They've not. So they only streamed their events. When their meeting begins, they're going to click a button, and then it's just going to turn into a video player. And then down below is where they keep all their meetings, their agenda, their minutes, etc. So let's go ahead and pick on this MoMA meeting here. When launching, it launches a new window, you see here in the center. And your video is right here. We've got some timestamps on the right side so that folks can jump to any portion of the meeting. And then down below is the agenda. So I'm going to hit play. You can play here. And turn on the caption portion. By the way, Chrome includes automatic captions now, so if you want to make sure you comply with the AI limits in terms of captioning, you can do that automatically just by having your viewers use the Chrome browser. There's nothing that you pay for. It's all included. So you'll be noticing as I'm talking, certain timestamps are being automatically sort of rolled through as we go through this particular meeting. And if I scroll down here, if I'm more focused on the agenda, my video will rhyme kind of in a sidecar and will follow along. And so if I want to jump ahead, let's say to the voting agenda, I can click this little icon right here that's going to jump me to that particular portion of the meeting. And if I scroll up to the top, it's the same thing as if I clicked any... So these timestamps that we see are also directly in the agenda. And when minutes are published, they're in there as well. Now, because they're using our full agenda management suite, you'll see all these attachments that are included. This is all part of one packet that, as a PowerPoint, you can download to a tablet, etc. You can make notes on it if you want to, or you can, once you choose to, just select a particular text and click on it. All of this is hosted on CHAMP, so you don't have to be... You don't have to worry about bandwidth or any of that kind of stuff. And some of this all includes directly in your suite of services. You'll also notice that they have multiple boards that they started with just blah blah, and then they added the planning commission, etc. They've added some other committees such as the PAC, Transportation Advisory Committee. So if I launch that one, that has a different look and feel. This is a different agenda, etc. But all of this is available. You can have as many boards, as many logins as you want, so that your staff can generate all of this and put it directly on their web. Makes sense?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. So let's switch back here. Let's talk a little bit about cameras. From a service side, we just saw what it looks like when everything is done. But the common question we get is, hey, I don't have cameras. If you do, we could certainly use those cameras. But if you don't, then this is what our camera system looks like. This is something that we don't actually manufacture, but it is our firmware, and it is something that is built explicitly for us. So it's HD, it's full 1080p. We typically do a guided install, which means that I ship this to your staff or a team partner, and they install it. However, word's gotten around that I've installed every camera system we've ever built in the city. So I would extend that courtesy to you guys as well, and we'll come down there and install it at additional charge. So we typically log into like a one-camera or a three-camera system or something like that. And then, of course, the question is, well, how many cameras do we need? So by default, you want to have three shots if you can do it, if it's in the budget. First one is a wide shot of the board. The second one is a close-up of the chairman. And the third one is a close-up of the podium. Not crazy, the camera shots that we have here, since you get the general idea. If you have these three shots, everything's covered.
It is.
The best part is that all of this can be done in bulk, which is what we saw at Woodford Hill. So those three shots are in one frame. So we have the wide shot of the board here, we have a close-up of the chairman, we have a close-up of the podium. But there's no habit to manage cameras, joysticks, and click buttons. It's all set at... It's hands-free. This means that anybody can start streaming and recording your meetings. It doesn't require anybody to have any specific knowledge. They're logging into a cloud software system. Click one button to start streaming, click another button to begin recording pretty soon. Now, you don't have three cameras. And I'm using those as an example here. They started with just one, and now they're looking to expand and get a second camera so that they can cover the podium, because everything is in one shot. Kind of like the shot that I have up here right now, right? I can see everybody in that one. So if I can flip it around and have two, that's great. But if you're just getting started, it can be very, very informative. So here's some camera packages to look at. A one-camera base is $2,500. It's a one-time fee. You purchase it one time, you open. And then, of course, you can always iterate and upgrade as you go. They'll start with this, and then they added a switcher so that they could do presentations and do other things. Now they're looking to add a camera. And so each year, they're being able to iterate and just add a feature, add a feature. Next up will be like a two-camera setup system, which is $6,000. And that adds a switcher. So that's what allows you to have multi-factor one, but also even want to switch back and forth if you need to. And then you can also upgrade this to a three-camera setup system, which would be my recommendation, which would be $8,000. And then we also have the three-camera studio system. Now, this is our flagship. It's super nice. It has a time expansion, and that's $14,000. So that's what Spring Hill has. That's what Bellmead is in. I just got word today that they've decided to go with the three-camera studio. But you have options, and you can always upgrade as you grow and as you develop. In terms of overall pricing, you're looking at two things, right? You've got the service. So for your size of meeting, it is $3,000 per year. That includes the CHAMP Agenda as well as CHAMP Video. That also includes unlimited boards, logins, viewers, training, support, and 24/25 monitoring on all hardware. For the hardware piece, I would say this is going to be $6,000 for the two-camera. It could be less, it could be a little more, and everything will be optional to choose. But that's a one-time promise. So you only have to expend that one time. But then the support and monitoring of all that hardware gets bundled in with the service. So we know before you do if there's an issue. So if you're having a bad day on the internet, which happened last week with Sarah in Florida, we're alerting them to that back before the meeting starts. We don't want to have new workers staff show up on the day and realize, hey, nothing's working, and I don't know why. You'll be notified ahead of time because we're monitoring that hardware 24/7. So on the service side, as I mentioned, you have basically unlimited everything. That's important because there are staff changes from time to time. You don't have to be the expert on the system we are. So we can retrace that as needed at any time. It doesn't cost you anything. You can have as many viewers as you want, which I used to reference Ferguson, Missouri, because they're one of our customers, and they had a little spot of trouble a few years ago. And they never saw them again. They paid a single annual payment and everything. So even though CNN and everybody and their brother was jumping on their website, they had no extra fees associated with delivering that stuff. Now, that's nothing compared to pandemic, because with the pandemic and school closures, no. That was a lot of doing. Full killing of the private example. Everyone wanted to know, where are you taking your children? So you don't have to worry that you're not going to have enough... You're not going to have the ability to deliver to camp everybody. And you'll notice I got a little TV mounted above my desk right there. We've just started working on our Roku app, and that's something that you can add down the road as well so that your meetings can also be broadcast on Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, etc. That's coming. It's currently beta right now, a little bit late. But that's with all that. You can have a limited event, so we should have as many meetings as you want, but you're not limited to meetings. So if you wanted to also do ribbon-tint ceremony, school board meetings, that sort of stuff, it's wide open to any type of content that you want to watch. You have a limited bandwidth and then unlimited support as well. So with that, that pretty much covers everything in a nutshell. Anybody have any questions or anything that you'd like me to go over?
I have a question about the agenda that you're talking about. How does that work, again? Is that just you're putting it on there and tabbing, tabulating it?
Why don't we take a look at Sydney? So I'm going to switch back. There we go. Now, I logged in here for Billersville because they not having a meeting, so we're going to log into Spring Hill and take a look at theirs because they use all those meetings. So if I come here... So this is what the CHAMP software looks like. So login, click, try to read the text, but I'll excuse me in a second. And I'm going to come over here to go to this. This is where you publish all of your events. So you'll see they have a planning commission site, and that's happening in real-time right now, so I don't want to mess with that. So we're going to make a copy of this meeting. Let me show you how we do it. I'm just going to click it to go into the event. And then at the top, I'm going to come over here. So you can see it. And I do option create a text event, or I can actually clone this event to a new meeting. So that's what I'm going to do. If you guys ever have a work session and then a regular session, this is a huge time saver for staff because that work session has all those attachments and everything else with it, and then you're recreating it by copying it without having to re-upload all those attachments. So now I have copied the planning mission. I'm going to call this CES test so that they know that's being transferred out here. And if I come to the agenda, this is what it looks like on staff perspective. Okay? So it looks a little bit like scaffolding. Doesn't really look like an agenda per se, so I don't know if it's helpful for you when you just want to preview it. But what's nice is the preview right here will show you exactly what it looks like. So this is another tab, and so here's your agenda. So all the attachments and everything else, I can view it before it's published on my site. And this, you can have your login if you want to take a look at it before it was actually published. But then this is how staff can mess with it. So let me zoom in a little bit so it's real. So let's take a look at Mr. Chairman's comments. If I expand that out, you can see that you have plenty of room to type that much as you want with as little or as much teeth in it. Some folks, like, for example, on a consent agenda, will have a consent agenda, and then they'll nest a series of items up here as they see fit, as long as you want. Or they'll put it all in the description, up to you. But this is where you build it. And building a script, for example, you can just click the plus button, and you can give it a title. So let's just call this a presentation. I'm getting insert this right after the call to work, right after Chairman's comments. That's where I'm going to do it. So I'm going to click here, and I'm going to hit save. And once I've done that, we'll see that we have presentation that's been added right here. And when you can start it, there's a faster way to do it. You just type in here, hit enter. Every time you do it, it just creates an agenda item. But now you would have your full agenda. If you need to move something around, like this presentation, maybe I put it in the wrong place. Oh, let's put it on our new business, and I can nest it there. Or if I want to put it as a sub item of something, then I can grab it here, and I can drag it and insert it anywhere I want to, such as here. I can nest as far as I want. So it makes the building of the agenda super, super fast and super quick. As far as those attachments are concerned, let's expand one. So here's one where they have three attachments. When I click it, it opens up, and here's those three attachments that we're adding. Just drag and drop those PDFs. It can also be a Word cloud, Excel, whatever you want, engines. But you just drag and drop those here, and then they appear here, attachments, and they get included into the packet. So the packet is the agenda plus all the attachments in one PDF, so there's one file there. But you can also open it individually if you're looking at it from a web perspective as opposed to the PDF perspective, but it's all world-wide. You can even link the thing. So if you have it published elsewhere on your website, you can just type it right here. So you can Google this example. So you can Google this example and call this a certificate. I can enter, and I've now added a link as an attachment directly to the site. So I can see when I close it, I can see that I have four attachments. Here we go, four attachments right here. And then that's all available in the packet that gets generated automatically whenever you publish it and make it available to the public. Publishing is done here under the overview tab. So this is not a publication because it's just junky stuff that I created. To publish it, let's go ahead and set a different club so it doesn't show up on the website right away. I toggle this button. This enables the event to be published, and technically it is viewable on their website. And then I get to choose to have care of which items I want to publish. So right now, everything but minutes is turned off. But if I just wanted to do, let's say, the agenda in the packet, and that's it, I can publish just now. Once I have a file for recording, I just toggle these two buttons. And now that publishes one. As far as how to publish to their website, they have an iFrame right here. So I'm going to go ahead and refresh this page since we have the new event. I'm going to go to the planning permission. And I'm going to go to October, and here's our CBS test. So this is an iFrame that can be embedded into virtually any website. So anytime you publish a channel, it automatically shows up. You're not having to copy page. You don't have to do any editing. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. And how do they tab like timestamps on the video? Like, let's say we changed the order or something.
Good. Good question. Especially if you move something, let's say, from consent to, let's say, a work session or something like that. You can move this at any time. So we've seen that with Springfield recently. They had something on consent they didn't want to keep. So the clerk was able to log in, just drag that where they wanted to. If it's something that you can move, like, let's say, this silly presentation that I created, you can actually move it depending or copy it depending. In this case, I'm just going to move it. That just puts it in a placeholder that I can pull into another meeting later if I want to. But it gets rid of it out of this meeting if I want to. As far as the timestamp goes, that all happens here under the timeline. And it uses your video either live, so this can be indexed in real time. Most folks do it after the fact, but you can do it in real time. TC Zone 8th has eight-hour meetings. So mandatory big timestamp during the meeting because they do not want to revisit it. But all you do is click this little clock right here. We don't have video associated because they are having lights, so I don't want to mess up. Well, we just have the default video as example. And so when I'm ready, all I do is click this button. It marks it as active. When the next item starts, it's scroll call. I click that one, and it jumps that way. If I was doing this with a long-hand file, I can pause, jump ahead, that sort of thing. So oftentimes, from my perspective, I wasn't in the meeting. I didn't see it. But I will see change your shirt with the podium. So we got blue shirt guy, red shirt guy. Then I know we're on the next section. I can pull back a little bit and drop a timestamp a little bit. But typically, a square meeting can be less than 20 minutes if you're doing it in a row. If you're doing it during the meeting, then, of course, as soon as you're done, the timestamps are available, etc. And since we're talking about recording progress, let me show you what happens. That happens here under the meeting tab. And then you have a dropdown here, and you just choose what it is you want. Upload one. You can browse files that may have been recorded previously that haven't been attached. Or you can choose your livestream. So if I still have a meeting, so I'm not going to mess with it. But we'll see that it's already on air, and it's already recording because the planning commission is now ready right this second. If it wasn't, I would just toggle this button here and click that button to begin the process. So when it's over with, all they're going to do is stop recording, go off air, and that meeting is now ready to be published with video. And that happens right here under when you browse your cloud recordings or all right here. You'll see this recording will be available. So nothing to upload. You simply click it to select it, and upon recording, it's ready. Typically, you can have your meeting published within seconds, at least within a minute for sure, so that you're not going to wait until the next day to publish unless you want to. A lot of folks do. They'll do the recording, and then everyone wants to get out there, and then the recording will come in and attach the file, but you can do that at any time. Make sense?
Yes. And then you mentioned like the setup and plugin, that it's just kind of plug-and-play anywhere you got a camera. How easy is that? And what kind of, yeah, how does that work? We just kind of have typically a desktop setup in here? How do your clients usually do that?
Yeah, good question. So I'm going to pick on Millersville because they weren't having a meeting when I last checked. So let's take a look. Under elements, I have an option which is camera studio control. So this is always available. The cameras are always on, and they're ready to go now. You can adjust the cameras because they are PTC. So you can point them to the ceiling. Technically, you can turn the system off. We don't recommend it because then we're not able to monitor it. But you'll notice two things. On the left are all your presets for your cameras. On the right is the video. So if I click this player button, and then I'm going to zoom out a little bit so we can make that video a little bit bigger, this is a private stream available only to you for your cameras. And you'll notice that they have a multi-view setup. So they went with the three-camera sample system. So they have a wide shot of the board, a close-up of the chairman, and a close-up of the podium. I can choose getting one of these cameras with a simple click. This is real time. This is sub, one-second responsive. So your live stream's going to look even better than this. This is like a super-fast stream directly to you point-to-point so that you can do those switches even remotely. You don't have to be on sub. Can, that's fine. But like O'Neal, for example, according to the clerk, that they will schedule a meeting at 5:00 on a Friday. And she's like, guys, you crazy? I'm out of here. I got teenagers that are tearing my house apart. I cannot wait. So they will, she goes home. She gets that situated and makes sure her house is still day. And then she can come here, and she can actually record the meeting remotely. She doesn't have to be on sub. Oh, sorry. But you can do it if you want. So I'm going to switch down to the chairman. So I'm just going to go click, and we see the changes here instantly. And then I'm going to switch to the podium. And then if I want to switch in this case, I'm going to click to the audience. We'll see that pan and zoom switching and taking in cam. So I'm not like setting up a shot and then switching to it. I take the viewer with me. But if you have just a one camera or a sample system like this, it makes it super easy to do it, and everybody's kind of oriented is what it is. But what's nice is that you can click this multi-view right here. Whoop! Everything is reset to the multi-view, and it's set to those default settings. So even if I were to mess with a camera and point it away for whatever reason, all I can do is click the multi-view, which if I click up here, there's a little switcher right here that also allows me to switch, but also choose the multi-view. So it's grabbing all three of those cameras, putting it in order for it. So that's how you control the cameras with the sample system. The more advanced system has more features. You can do a preview. You can set up that shot before you switch to it. You can have a ton more handles. The sample has four. And then the studio has eight or nine. I want to say eight. Eight inputs. So if you're thinking of expanding down the road, that could be really good. But for most folks, if you're just getting started out, like a sample one or two camera, three camera is a perfect way to start. You can have three cameras and an HDMI input for a presentation, which likes this, all controlled through the sample system.
So those are connected basically through the cloud. There's no plugging your computer in and having those videos feed into your computer and into a desktop or a laptop here in the room?
It doesn't work that way. So it's between your cameras and the Champ system, which is in the cloud and make it available there. But we do offer some multi-cameras. So one is also streaming Facebook, YouTube, etc. You can down the road also Roger, and multimedia, etc. So you can get to those other channels. But it's not software that's running locally on your computer that you're having to keep running and all the rest. So if I were to go on here or start recording this particular system and then through my laptop in the river, it's still going. It's still going, you know? It's not dependent on what's happening right through your line.
Yeah, thank you.
And so one of the things that's been a topic of discussion here is with sound quality. You know, when we've streamed with some of our former setup, people at home couldn't really hear very well. And I'm guessing we would be using the microphones that we have currently. But if there's an echo or something like that, can you adapt the software to try to improve the sound quality?
Yeah. So let me show you what this looks like. So I'm going to switch to camera studio control for Springfield. And the basic thing is I want to show it with a particular feature. So you still have everything to picture. So if you want to be able to control your audio, a lot of folks are using, this is an opportunity to upgrade that as well. So this mixer is $1,500, and again, one time. But by clicking this, I get to select however many mixers I have if they just have one. I'm not going to mess with it because this is real time. It's actually happening. And it's a lot of fiddly nonsense stuff. The idea is we're able to remotely manage all of their microphones as they're here. This also has some noise eating and pressure effects that allow us to limit so that if you're not talking, it's not picking up the room and echoing and all that sort of shit. They also have a need to be using our mics as well. So we do offer microphones if you want to upgrade against the podium stylus typically that we get. So it's got a skinny neck with a little arm. I guess look at the video and see what that looks like. But to have that sort of audio control comes primarily from the mixer so that we can manage it and fix that. A lot of this is set in the background. It's not something that staff would necessarily have access to. It's something that we control on our end because it can be relatively, we don't want, because we're remote, we don't want to have a ton of echo feedback or things like that that we're not able to control. But each one of these, if I go into setup, there's things that can adjust such as gain, phantom power, it does that thing. But all of this audio is fully managed by the mixer. And it's rare, once you kind of get below the set, you'll notice we have everything kind of set near max, and it's good to go. Truly nothing more to do. But if you do have somebody and really controlling the real audio as well, if you have somebody that's a low talker or just need to bump it up a little bit, you can go in there and nudge it. That times out of 10, once we get it dialed in after a meeting or two, then you're pretty much done and you close it, and you're right back into your studio controls for everything else. They have the more advanced version, so you're seeing some additional features with the Champ Studio to where you're able to review. And they even have router control, so they're controlling the TVs in the space as well. If they weren't having a meeting, I could move a camera so you could see, but I don't think they were appreciating that effect. But yes, we can adjust audio. I would have to take a look and see what you have, kind of get a sense of audio. I'm in AM, so about an hour and a half, I guess, for you guys to get that. So it would be hard to go there and just see what you have, see what can be used, and then put together something that, hey, I think this would dial it in.
Yeah. I think that would.
That'd be awesome.
Does anybody else have any questions?
You mentioned TVs. Is that like for presentations?
Exactly. So with Louis Springfield as an example, they sent out two sets of TVs, two on the left, two on the right. And they have one TV that's facing the board, kind of like me right now. So they're also using virtual voting. So on the left TVs, they put the digital voting. On the right TVs, they put the presentation or whatever. So the planning permission, for example, somebody is showing plaques, those kind of things, and you're able to change it. This is your little turn on a second. You're able to change it right here under the router controls. This is an advanced thing. But you can look down here a little bit. You can choose what image you want displayed. So right now, there we go. The board display is showing the voting display. The left TVs are showing the podium or lectern presentation. So somebody shows up, the laptop plugs in an HDMI cable, their laptop is now showing all those TVs. You can also switch to it if you want to show back to the panel. Multi-view doesn't do too well with that because oftentimes it's a little windowed, and it's kind of hard to read the text, that sort of thing. You usually want it full screen. But it's not like you're, you know, recording a football game where you're going to miss the winning touchdown if you don't capture a shot, which usually, hey, let's take a look at that presentation. And, you know, you have the 30 seconds before you click the button to switch to it. And then the right TVs are showing the voters. So if you want to control the AVs in your room, you can do that with our system too. This came about primarily because of pandemic, and folks that were remote wanting to control TVs in-house were like, you can totally do that. And that turned into a follow-a-audience rep. So the audience routers is like $6,000. You would need to get the studio system to take advantage of it. And my suggestion would be to start with whatever the budget is, with something more basic, and then work your way into it. Murray County Schools bought everything that I had, absolutely everything. And that was a pretty big lift in terms of training and everything else to get them up to speed. Digital voting, cameras, agenda, like, that was a lot. So I actually recommend starting with something a little bit similar and then upgrade to it when you're ready. But of course, the choice is yours. I'm not going to tell you, oh, he said, yes, we have to have the audience rep.
What is digital voting?
Great question. So I'm going to click here, and we can take a look. I have a whole slide deck for this. See here, we're looking at who else has it. Murray County Schools, let's take a look. They're not having, it's easier if you're not having a meeting. So we're just going to look here. Well, okay, perfect. Back to the head of the list. This is fantastic. So digital voting has four components. And I have a whole slide deck for this, but if you'll bear with me, I'll just kind of march through it. The first is that the clerk has a meeting control. She's able to, or he is able to start the meeting and advance the way through the meeting so that everything else acts as a minion to that tool which he keeps. So it is a weapon or things just like the camera controller. There's basically a meeting controller that they're able to run with. The second piece is the display, which is what we see right here where it says instruction update. So this is where the data that's in your agenda is available as a video image that can be shown in chambers so that folks know exactly where they are on the agenda. So if I show up, you know, 10 minutes late, like, wow, what's going on? I can look at a display and see that, oh, they're on 3.2.2 instruction, etc. The third piece is your control panel, which is the board member app. You don't have to have any particular platform. It's web-based, so you can have a tablet, a phone, a laptop, Chromebook, you name it, and you can fix and manage it. Murray County chose iPads. And they said, that's it. Everybody, every board member gets a new iPad, and that's what we're going to use for digital voting. They have 22 board members, so I think it's good that they chose to consolidate around one platform. Others have not. So Murray County Schools gives you a choice. You can either choose between a laptop or a tablet. Springfield was like, hey, you know what? Whatever you got, we're not providing anything. And so that was really interesting because I was able to see firsthand, folks using Android devices, tablets, and laptops, and everything just works. But it shows you where you are in the agenda. And when it's time to vote, the clerk presses a button. The vote pops up, and then you're able to choose DNA, abstain, etc. All of that data is captured, and then it's available in a minute automatically. There's no typing that you have to do. You don't have to go back and search the video. What did everybody say? You have everybody's vote recorded and available. And then the fourth piece is a printer. So there's a digital printer that prints out a paper receipt that shows every motion, second amendment, if you may. It's just one long ticker tape per ring for each one of those voting votes. And you can have as many votes as you want. So if you're voting on something, and then you guys decide to double back, hey, let's go back and readdress that because we forgot something, let's vote again this time ahead of the day. You can do that. And it all happens here within the software. So what we're seeing here is the display that is showing where they are on the agenda. So what we're seeing here is the display that is showing where they are on the agenda. And anytime you change it in the agenda, it automatically updates here and it shows whatever you wanted to be in chamber, on the screen, etc. Those meeting controls, where they were right there in the comments, the meeting control. You select your meeting space because you can have point one. They haven't gone live with this yet, so we were using this for training last week and it looks like they've stayed on. But this is what you see. So if I wanted to move to call member, I just click here and I can change the IP. And we're now on call to order. And so that video would be displayed differently as well. Let me show you what it looks like from a board perspective, with some of the region and code. And then I look at a private tab, I go to vote, I've got a Champ tab, so you guys know how. There we go. This is what you would see from your device. So each meeting, you would get a ticket. And that ticket is your password. You don't have to remember a password, you're never going to forget your login. If you've got five meetings that day, you will have five tickets. That part's a pain, but it keeps you from having to remember meetings. And so all you're going to do is you're going to enter in your code. There's no numbers, it's just letters. It doesn't have to be uppercase, lowercase, the height goes to come in automatically, you just simply enter that code. When you log in, this is what you see. So we are on call to order right now because that's what I selected in the meeting control. And you'll see, I can scroll through and see the entire agenda, I can click on any attachment I want, and then that opens up, and then I can close it and I'm right back to my agenda. So with that being said, I'm going to switch back here and I'm going to advance to the meeting. So let's say we move on to 3.1 flying, so I click it and say yes. And now when I look at it, I'm automatically updated as a board member, I know exactly where we are. And let's say we wanted to go vote. So I'm going to come here, I'm going to get a motion to approve from Javilla, Jackson makes a second, and at this point, we're ready to vote, so I'm going to get voting. As a board member, that's when you see this, that pops up to notify you that it's now time to vote. And so you vote yay, a, abstain, whatever you want to do. And it's not closed until all of the votes are calculated. Now, as of right now, we just have one person logged in, and this person was registered previously, so he's still logged in, but we just had these two. We don't have the full, but this is GW data that we're just playing with. But if you show up on the day and you've broken your tablet, or oh, I forgot to call, what happened? The clerk can always take the vote for you. In fact, the finance department at Murray County School, the clerk actually does this because the board's like, oh, we don't need to use the voting system just for the meeting. She's like, you can do what you want, but I'm going to capture the vote because it's easy to get counted in minutes. So the clerk is always able to adjust as necessary. So if someone just does a voice vote, you say, yes, I vote yay, they can capture the voting. They close the voting. So now the voting is closed, which means that the display for that is going to show all the results, which I guess I should show you in a second. A lot of windows and tabs. So there you go. So it's going to rotate between the votes that were calculated. And so it shows a ton of the data that they didn't register or didn't have everybody logged in, but if they did, it would show you everybody's individual vote. This only happens after the vote is captured. And then it shows the summary as well, and it'll just be rotated back and forth until the clerk decides, okay, we're ready to move on, complete the voting, say yes. Now I just printed a ticket receipt and Murray County School, that shows some random votes. And we're ready to move on to the next thing, which let's say is this operations update. And I say yes, and now we're on that I app, so it shows up in the studio controls, it's there. And as a board member, I see where we are if we can do all of that. I can always scroll up to see what's happening, but I always have contact of exactly where we are. So that's it down here, you can add digital voting, you can add it at any time. I believe is $3,000 a year. And of course, all that support and everything else is included, so we've got the display that we're monitoring, as well as the printer and everything else to ensure that you have real time access 24/7, and that all of those four devices are all staying in sync so that you can do it in real time.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thanks very much for your presentation. Interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A lot. And so I appreciate you letting me just buy votes with all this information. But I'm here, you guys want to direct me into exactly what types of things you're interested in, I'm happy to put together for both. There's no pressure on this end. We are an easy come and we're just on the road, so it's one of those things that maybe the next step is just to come take a look and serve the site. But I stand by for your direction. Again, appreciate your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too.
That's about seven levels of awesome right there.
That was interesting. I'm glad our system works also, it was much better.
He's like, maybe I need to come down there tonight.
Just so you know, I thought digital voting was you could pull the people on the live stream, not when he was talking about, sorry.
That might be necessary if you have 22 board members. Maybe not with five.
I think we can tally the five.
I think to see a proposal for them with our specific situation. Yeah. I think would be very helpful.
Yeah.
I'd be very interested.
The way it's built, where it's directly streaming to them, is taking that whole, somebody needing to plug in, and then a board, you have a board that wants to do it, and are they going to know how to plug in and then get Zoom up and running or whatever? You're just completely removing that component where it's kind of handled on the cloud by them. I think it's, that's a good way to have it built.
Sounds like making the agendas are awfully easy too, and you don't have to, you don't have to email them, they're just on there, right?
No, they're just there. We could maybe get rid of paper. That would be great, you know? And I think it sounds like a win-win, win, well, really, win-win-win. For us as a council, it would be something that would streamline what we're doing. For the staff who so tirelessly provides all this information for us, that is a lot of work and a lot of hours, that's meticulous, especially with the minutes. And then for our citizens who are really excited about us moving forward and making this decision about how we're going to provide our meetings online. So I'm really, really excited. Thank you for finding.
It was Jennifer and Katie at Tampa.
Jennifer and Katie, thank you for finding this company.
Thank you.
Well done.
And to that point about citizens is that, that, the way with the timestamps and everything, it is so much more digestible and it's like transparency forward of, hey, here's, go to this spot, it's going to, I guess, have the actual agenda item and attachments that are being talked about, as well as knowing exactly where to go, instead of the kind of hunt you sometimes have to do.
So can you get a more detailed proposal from him and then we'll talk about that?
And I'll reach out to him and see if we can't get it onsite, so and then get a detailed proposal and get that to council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the website options review.
Yes, and from the presentation from last week from Proud City and then the demonstrations from Revise, I just kind of wanted to have a discussion about, you know, moving forward in either one of those companies more beneficial than the other, I guess, is kind of where I'm going. Because that would tie into also with our live streaming, website, not a webpage, but our website. So getting that website design moving into within the company, just trying to get this going.
I think that attachment from Champ might break our current website. I'm not sure that it's compatible, so I think we have to. I don't think it can, I don't think it can go on there.
Yeah. Are you, does anybody have any comments about the different presentations that we saw? Staff, if you guys, do you guys have a preference between one or the other?
We do. We really, really like Revise.
And I did like them better. I think that what they have to offer is a little bit better. I am a little bit apprehensive about their pricing model because, I mean, their quote is pretty clear, but what are we missing that we don't know we need, that we'll know in the next year maybe, and is outrageously priced? Or something like that? Like, that's what my concern is with Revise. It's à la carte at best.
No, that was, I think that was.
That's Proud City.
That's Proud City.
Yeah, it was too, but Revise mentioned to me that he had talked to some people about adding some different items that were, that would be additional cost.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
There was something about preserving space, I think, park space perhaps, or I don't remember exactly now what it was, but.
It just seemed like every time I asked him, like, can we do this, can we do that? It was like, well, sure we can, I need to revise that, your quote.
But I think Proud City was fairly à la carte as well, so I'm not sure we have a really good quote from either of them. It would be a good idea for us to, if we know, you know, now after looking at these presentations, what we really want, to just go to them and say, this is what we really want, like, give us the, give us what it's going to be, rather than nickel and diming us down the road as we build it, you know? But yeah, I have a feeling at the end of the day, they're going to be fairly close in price, but I don't know, I don't, I'm not technologically savvy enough to know what I was looking at when I was looking at those quotes. So I don't know what the information they're providing is, yeah.
As far as the look, I thought Revise had a little bit of a, like the outer look. I liked the way that their websites looked when I went through and looked at them. But that's just.
I mean, it's the aesthetics.
Yes, the aesthetics, I like.
Well, I liked the ease of use of their presentation.
Well, I think what I really appreciate with Revise is that they create our new website. Where with Proud City, they're going to teach us how to create a new website. And, I mean, we've got great, amazing staff that does so much, but if we're paying about the same amount of money, why don't we have a website created for us that we maintain?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that was, that was one of my downsides with Proud City is, you know.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the consensus seems to be that everybody's kind of favors Revise, certainly staff does. It'd just be nice to know if we can get like a real good idea of what it's going to cost us in the end for exactly what we were looking for.
Yeah, I think, what are those add-ons that people were talking about? You mentioned being able to online schedule reservations for a pavilion or a park, I think that's useful.
Yes.
It depends on how much it costs, what that add-on is.
Yeah. Frankly, my presentation with Revise wasn't that great because I really couldn't understand, he was going really fast and I couldn't really understand what he was talking about, and so I did not get a good feel for that. But I know that he mentioned there were a number of things that people had said they wanted that would be an extra charge, so I don't know exactly what those things are.
Yeah. My conversation with him was very similar to that.
Yeah. I don't know if that's the guy y'all got an original presentation from, I think it was a different guy, Sean maybe? Anyway, if we could just get like a good idea of the comparison, I think we kind of know overall which one we're in favor of.
Yeah, and like, I mean, like, maybe you could touch base with Sean and kind of get an idea of what we all asked for. Because I don't think, I mean, I couldn't, he would say, oh, well, that would be the such and such application, and here's how that works, and it worked really great, and he showed it to me, but I don't know what the application's called, I couldn't tell you what to ask him for.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll look again and then add the additional, additional items to the overall proposal and see what we have. And then reach out to Proud City as well with all of those additional costs slash services and see, putting the two together, which one is, which one is better.
Yeah, I got the sense from Proud City that they gave us like the basic, basic plan, and that you're, at the end of the day, when you put the things in that you really want, you're going to have a lot of add-ons. But I don't, I don't know what I'm looking at enough to know that for sure.
I do think, I just want to mention from Proud City that one of the questions I asked to see kind of how updated they stay as far as the latest look and feel was, give me an example of something in the last six months that you updated. And the explanation was that they fixed some things to deal with some latency issues, which isn't really an upgrade, it's kind of fixing a problem. So I kind of read that as maybe they're, they might be struggling a little bit with some of those newer look and feel things that take a lot of processing or whatever, and they're built in a way that they had to kind of tinker with them and get them to work on people's browsers. Less of that feel with Revise.
Okay. All right. Next item is the MTS Fire Department study. Now we have someone from MTS here to talk to us.
I don't know if I have a bulldog here now, I'm trying to follow a little bit. I felt like I was almost back home. I grew up in Columbia County, so Spring Hill was the next town to our north, and I went to Murray County School, so I thought, oh, all them books they were doing about ISO might have went through one of them. I'd probably go for that.
That's right. I appreciate you providing us with the report. We have a lot of stuff on the agenda, this is only the third item. So rather than having a presentation, that last one went long, obviously, maybe we can just, I think, I know everybody's gotten the report, we can just open it up for questions right off the bat. You can tell us, you know, we could just start with questions if anybody has some.
I'm going to have to charge you for the presentation anyway, so.
Sounds good.
We'll talk to Hannah about that. Yeah, so does anybody want to start? I will, if nobody has any pending questions they want to get out right off the bat. First of all, thank you for putting that together. We appreciate it. I think it was a glowing review of our fire department, so we appreciate the fire chief for putting together a good department. It seems like we have a fire station number two that may not have been placed in the best part of Signal Mountain, services a small number of homes, but it is what it is. I was curious about the comparison you did with some other towns. There weren't a lot of them on there, but there were a few, and I was curious how you chose those towns and, you know, how they were similar or different from Signal Mountain.
How I chose them is I have a spreadsheet that I put together for the minimum firefighter training law. There are several exemptions on that law, so I, and they're all based on population. So I have the town, I have the population in 2020, 2010, and 2020, 2000, 2010, and 2020. So I just took my spreadsheet and went through there and tried to find towns with similar population as y'all's. That was, you know, pretty quick. I kind of got that part of the assignment really late, and so it's not all inclusive, just like I said in my report, I did kind of add that at the last minute. So I'm trying to get over to that actual document here. And you guys got a really good eyes over here too. Your fire department really does rock, I'll be honest, even though you don't want to see my presentation.
Well, I mean, yeah, we got the report and it was a good exhaustive report, I felt like. We didn't get the, you know, some of the pictures and things, but.
One of the things that Fire Department has in a lot of departments though is pictures of firefighters sitting on mountain tops fighting fire. This is the only, only study I've ever done and had a picture like that. So that really sets you guys apart, you know, a lot of stuff. Just about there you go.
While you're, while you're getting there, maybe I can ask you another question, or maybe I shouldn't, I should wait and get this one answered first.
Well, is maybe, because I have a question about what he's looking for, so maybe.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize you were going to have to scroll through this.
Yeah.
Is this on?
The, no, about the comparison. You have it compared with all combination fire departments? And I take it that that is a combination between career and volunteer, or career and part-time, is that correct?
No, it probably is career volunteer.
Career volunteer.
I had to pull that information just from memory or their website. There's no repository for this type of information. Again, I just got on there, got some towns, went to their websites and tried to, either I knew about them or Alcoa, for instance, I did a study for them recently, I know them pretty intimately. But I just had to go pull some towns together that were similar in size and similar ISO ratings. And so I got one in there that's got a better ISO rating than you all, which is a class one. I've got three or four that has about the same, and then a couple of three that's got a worse ISO rating, so just always looking for it.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. So Alcoa doesn't, it doesn't seem to be a good comparison because they have three fire stations and a lot more people, but.
I've got a couple thousand more. Again, I tried to go for what, about 70,000 or 80,000. Really, only looking at seven-nine-hundred, y'all had eighty-eight-hundred, eighty-four-hundred. That's a little bigger, that's a little bit bigger, bigger. But see how when you look down at Leo's trying to get similar populations, that was kind of down and down and down.
So, assume, and I'm sorry, did I cut anybody off?
No, go ahead.
So if Alcoa is meeting the NFPA standards?
They're not.
For, are any of these meeting the NFPA?
Is it possible? I mean, is, is there a fire station that meets the NFPA standard?
As far as staffing and everything?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
I don't, I can't tell you one each. And they're related to NFPA, meet ISO, you know, recommendation, you need six firefighters per unit every day. So, you know, you're a three-person, I mean, three apparatus, three leading teams of people on duty a day, riding those trucks every day.
But the recommendations you make are based on the NFPA?
They're based on NFPA at four per company. That's the minimum. And we can talk about that. Always when I work with towns, I have to base my recommendations on a standard. It's, it's you all's job to balance that standard of what's an acceptable risk in the town, signal mountain. And balance that with the revenues that are made. Because if you have unlimited revenues, you could have an unlimited fire department. And police department, and water department, and all those other departments.
Right.
You know, it's your job, I think, to, the chief, Leo, and his staff will identify all these risks to the community. And hopefully, put together some sort of mitigation strategy for those. And then, they'll come and stand at that podium there and ask you all to consider funding those, or implementing this, or implementing that. And really, that's where you guys come in to say, yeah, we can do that. Or maybe that, whatever you're trying, the risk you're trying to get rid of, maybe that's acceptable. Because ultimately, you can't do it always.
Yeah, I was, I was looking, that was another question I had that I was gonna ask while you were looking, but it, I felt like that wasn't good. But you've raised it. I, I felt like the NFPA standards are just unattainable by anybody. And it sounds like they are, and they're just a standard that if you had an unlimited budget, this is what you'd do. But if you have a budget, you have to, nobody can actually meet the standards because they have to worry about budgets.
So when you look at NFPA seventeen-ten, that's the standard that, that we all shoot for. When we get that call to a square foot residential structure. Now, when I look at you guys, town, you've got some of them, and you've got some, what I call mega-structures out here on the edge of the mountain. All that really pose risks down there. And y'all might live there, I don't know. But those, those big homes out here on the mountain, those are, those pose a huge risk to your community that you don't have enough people to build it. And probably won't never. That's where you have to phone a friend, you have to phone down the street to Chattanooga and all these other people to come help. And then, you call the helicopter or something to come drop fire out there, because you can't reach it from over here. But when you look at that picture right there, that comes right out of seventeen-ten, and they critically, basically, what it takes to run a fire. And for every person you don't have there, somebody gets two assignments. Because all those assignments are gonna be given. And if you don't have that, those folks there, then your firefighters that you do have, instead of getting that one assignment they can do right paneling and just be done with that assignment, they get two or three assignments. So, if you show up with nine instead of sixteen or seventeen, they just get more assignments. It takes longer to do what you need to get done. It's a risk, and you have to balance the risk with the revenue and what's acceptable.
But it doesn't sound like anybody's doing the standard.
The closest person in Tennessee I know of that has done that is Memphis. Ford's Department in the state. They are a class-one fire department by a long shot. I mean, they got, I mean, they got a woman, and it's very, it's almost perfect. My department, Columbia, we're offering, we're a class one. We got that just by the time I retired. Nothing special about us. We just plan for our risks and make some good decisions and got questions, so.
When you say class one, is that ISO? Is that the same thing?
Yes. You guys have a class-two fire department. Don't mean they're second class. It just means there's some points left on the table. And, you know, in the study, I probably found a few that, you know, we can all improve a little.
What, how, how large is Columbia?
About fifty thousand.
Yeah.
A lot of them are top five.
Okay. To what, to what extent, what things, how much of it's driven by, what are the key components that driving an ISO rating down? Is it all staffing and equipment?
It's training, it's equipment, it's testing the equipment.
It's the water department.
Your water company, about ninety percent of your ISO. Your communication center, you have a communication center. How quick the phone gets answered, how quick they dispatch the department. There's just, the department's fifty percent, the water, water company's forty, your nine-one-one system's ten. And then, oh, by the way, the fire department gets another five and a half points for their community reductions stuff. Their codes, their public education. And I got some really good slides of them interacting with the public and getting those points. So. And that's another study we could do at some point if you'd like for us to. We could take their last ISO report and see if there's ones pretty easily we left there on the table and make some advice on that too.
I have a question about, is it okay if we move on to another section?
Yeah.
Okay. So, under your recommendation, recommendation for medical behavior health recommendations?
Yes.
Some of the recommendations is to provide no less than ten visits or sessions with a mental health provider for the purpose of treating PTSD.
Yes.
Now, should that be something that is mandatory or offered?
It's state law. I actually figured that out with Tennessee COVID mandate.
So, are we not doing this right now?
No, I don't think so.
So, that's.
Does it have to be mandatory with the?
You say provide, does that mean we offer it, and the firefighter can say, hey, I don't want to go?
Yeah, they don't have to.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, there's, there's training. Whether you know it or not, suicide and fire police, there's, there's.
No.
I mean, in the fire police, MS, that's the number one killer. I mean, they say what that is, but suicide is.
Is that tied into our insurance, like our health insurance that we offer? If they provide the opportunity to have up to ten visits, or however many they give you for a mental health treatment? That's, that's what that is? Or are you saying that the fire department should, you know, require these guys to?
I'm saying that if I come to you, I'm an employee, and I come to somebody, I don't know, maybe I call a member. And I say, I think I'm having a problem. You guys need to provide me up to ten visits for free to go try to mitigate that problem.
And that's, I guess that's what I'm asking, because I do realize the seriousness of this. And I understand statistically, what, I mean, I understand what the statistics say about firefighters and police officers, which is kind of one of the reasons I honed in on this section.
Yeah.
But, I mean, your recommendation is that we provide this, and I guess that might be a question more for Elaine. Are we not providing this? I mean, if we don't have to make it mandatory, then they would have to ask for it. So it's more of making sure that they're aware that it is available to them. Is that, is that kind of the recommendation?
Employee assistance program. I know in Long Island, they would provide up to six visits. The state law requires ten.
Okay.
And that person needs to be, themselves, part of the law right here. This is the last bullet I got here. That person needs to have some training in what we go for.
No, I, I do understand what you're saying, but I guess because this is the recommendation I'm asking you.
Are we not doing it, I think is your question?
Well, are we not doing it? And if it's not, if this isn't something that we should mandate, which, I mean, I don't necessarily think that it is. But they have to be aware that it is available.
Somebody needs to make sure you have a professional that can offer this service. And if those people have a number they can call to activate.
Okay, thank you.
That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
All right, very good. Thank you.
We also, we also, we do training annually on critical incident stress management.
Right.
It's kind of what that last point is talking about.
Yeah. Okay.
In addition to the.
So, in one section.
That last bullet though is your mental health professional needs to be trained specifically
Right, it's outside.
Public safety, public.
It's not, it's not, it's outside.
Okay, so. One sentence, one, one part of this that you had in here, the comment, and let me see if I can read it. There are not different NFPA standards for career versus combination departments, correct?
Yeah, there's a seventeen-ten is for career, seventeen-three-ten is for volunteer. So you have here.
We have career.
Full-time department.
Yes. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
A lot of the departments that used to be what I would consider a combination because they have paid staff and volunteer staff have transitioned over to what I consider all career now. And so, they don't have volunteers. They pay somebody ten bucks an hour, fifteen, twenty bucks an hour to come in and work a shift, or they're part-time.
Part-time.
So, back, back to that list of the towns. I, I noticed that Alcoa had thirty firefighters in three stations and eleven thousand people. There was another town, I think it was Lexington, had about seventy-nine-hundred people, two stations, sixteen firefighters, and a class-two rating. So, and we're a class-two rating with twenty-nine firefighters in two stations. I'm wondering how is Lexington, what are they doing different from us where they have thirteen fewer firefighters in the same class?
I'm thinking, just, just thinking, I don't know this for sure, but I bet they have a big cockade of volunteers. It takes three volunteers to equal one full-time paid staff. So, if, and I'll give you another example. Williamson County, Tennessee, close to where I live now. They have volunteer firefighters that sign up to come actually staff a station for twelve hours, four hours, twenty-two. So those people, even though they're not getting paid, count one for one. So, even if I'm setting a fire hall, I'm working a shift, not being paid. So when the tons drop, structure fire, I get on a truck and leave, I'm one for one, even though I'm not being paid. If you have to come from home, whatever it is, then you're a volunteer.
Three to one.
Three to one.
If you, does that affect your ISO rating, if you're using volunteers? So if you have, if you have, you know, sixteen full-time and, I don't know, you'd have to have a lot of volunteer. I mean, how do they have a class-two rating?
Well, they could also have a backup source of water and some lots of other things that we don't, right?
They could have, and I was talking to a teacher before the meeting, you know, I started my partner before the meeting. He's doing a study in West Tennessee. And we was talking about how that sixteen people get assigned to the residential structure fire. If you got a full staff here at nine, and then you have an automatic aid with Chattanooga, maybe they bring another four. And then, what, was it Walder's or something? Maybe they bring two or three. Next thing you know, boom, 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 you got fifteen, fourteen. You're getting close. And I'm just thinking with, not knowing too much about West Tennessee, just knowing that's where they're at. They probably got some partnerships going on. So that they can recruit several folks on the fire.
Right. How many volunteers?
About your stations, you know, you do have stations two, kind of up here right on the edge of the city limits.
It doesn't seem to serve a, a large part of our population.
So a fire station, just so you know, y'all about, what, eight and a half square miles over there, remember? Fire station normally can cover about four, four and a half square miles, one hundred percent coverage. So, you know, just doing the math, it seems like you could get two. And, and if everything being equal, you would. But like you said, that station two being out here, there's a whole bunch of that mile and a half road miles that is outside your city proper. These people out here really appreciate that. If you make, I mean, y'all, y'all may have that automatic aid with that department too. So, again, that's very helpful for them. But for the people in this part of your town, or your school and all that here, that's not within one of those zones. That just makes for a little bit longer response.
I mean, yeah, that, there's a larger portion of non-taxpaying citizens being serviced by station two.
But on the other hand, whenever you have that fire in your town, I guess they can hit you too. So it's a reciprocal situation. Now, this, this fire here, I guess you saw that, this is a ladder truck response. It got over two and a half road miles, and runs out of air, or is down at station two. So, we can talk about that in a minute, but. Y'all know where all that?
Yeah.
I know there were some questions about apparatus, maybe the number and types. Of course, your town has a basic fire flow of thirty-five hundred gallons a minute. So, your engine one right across the street over here has a fifteen-hundred gallon pump. Your ladder truck over there has a fifteen-hundred, and then engine two has a fifteen-hundred. So, that's forty-five hundred gallons, right? The only thing is, without partners like Chattanooga, or Walensridge, or whoever to come up here and help, when ISO comes, they're not even gonna give you full credit for your ladder because you need that pump capacity to get to that thirty-five hundred gallons a minute. So, again, there's, this ISO thing is, it's very complicated. I don't want to answer the questions generally. You just have to really get down and specifically look at your case.
Do you know, I mean, where do you get the information about the ISO insurance savings? You, you mentioned something about two to five percent per one class rating?
Dennis Wolf, he, he's retired now, but he worked with, if I'm not mistaken, I hate to call names, but I think it was State Farm Insurance. And it was over in the Memphis area. And between working with them and ISO, and just patch that together, and that's a pretty good, a pretty good estimate. Of course, we don't set insurance prices and all this. I was addressing a council like y'all one time, and the council person said, well, I heard that they don't, you know, the ISO doesn't matter. You know, they just gonna price their insurance at whatever rate. I said, you know, some people probably do that. But I said, if you talk to ISO, they'll tell you all the major areas of insurance, buy the product. And along with your credit score, your crime rate, a lot of things goes into your ISO that we never studied. But, and then about, probably ten minutes of talk like this went by. And then all of a sudden, he come back to me and said, you know, my insurance guy said something about if blah, 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 my insurance would go up. And I said, well, I thought it didn't affect it. So, you know, he was kind of speaking out of both sides a little bit, maybe he was trying to get me off, I guess. But I'm telling you, every insurance company buys the products that ISO sells. They're profitable. They're in their community almost every day. Your ISO too really affects one or two family dwellings more than anything. These large buildings you have, and I think I had a couple in the photos. Their, their insurance is rated individually for that one, that one place. They'll come there and they'll see if they've got built-in fire protection, all these different policies and procedures. And they'll write down the policy based on what they feel like the risk is for that one building. Your ISO rating really affects that one or two family dwellings more than anything. This is the thing here that you guys need to really play at this thing. That was a not wanting to call for a fire without a fire sprinkler. This is the way you reduce the risk of the. This is the way you reduce the risk of losing.
Are there a lot of homes, private homes that have sprinkler systems?
Marginals.
I couldn't imagine. I, I haven't, I haven't, I mean, maybe some homes I've been in do have them, but I, nobody's ever told me, hey, I've got a sprinkler system. I've, obviously businesses have them, but I've just never seen a, a private home with one.
Chief has contact, these people out here, they'll come out here, in fact, I guess they've been here, I got this off your website, they do a side-by-side burn in your community and show how your fire department are going to put that fire out. And then the one right over here, it puts out on its own, and, and more than saving property, it saves your residents, it saves your firefighters, because that's a fire they don't have to fight.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I'm just wondering if it's very prevalent, I just have never heard.
Down in Nolanville in your last presentation, they have fire sprinkler organs there where everything built is sprinkled.
So it's required? It's required in Nolanville?
It's required.
Wow.
Your 2018 fire convention that you have adopted requires it in one and two family dwellings, but the state, their implement wisdom said for you to take that requirement out. You as a board can put it back for the two-thirds due, and then that way any resident that gets built in this town would be fire sprinkler. In my home, my new construction home, I spent a dollar a quarter a square foot for my fire sprinkler. My wife and I did a negotiation, I had a covered porch on the back of my house, and she don't like to ski this, so she will end up screaming. Guess what? It costed the same as my fire sprinkler, just to scream in that back porch. My investment was a lot better than hers. It cost an eye, well, you're a sprinkler building, you know, while I'm spending the night in Chattanooga tonight, you know, she or my grandkids or whatever was on home, they're sleeping in their sprinklers, too, I'm worried about them dying in a house fire tonight. Anyway, that's, that's not part of the story, but it is, it's a legacy for you all as council people or elected officials. Another thing I put in your report, I put in all my reports, is the town here is perpetual, it's growing, it's expanding, it's doing different things, and you all as council or as elected officials, council members, y'all have certain priorities. I can do a study, and I can tell you where a fire department needs to be located, different things, but if you pass some sort of resolution that puts into place a response kind of standard, then as the town grows or whatever, and I know y'all's urban growth area is not much bigger than the town now, I don't think, from what I could tell, so geographically, you're not going to grow a lot more. But there are parts of town that's not within a primary response. So again, that's a way to do that, and then again, I encourage, man, oh, that's a wonderful theory, so. If you look at that photo, that's my kitchen and my breakfast area, and you can see right here, where the hair goes, that's built-in fire protection. That's a firefighter that sleeps in my house every night up there, and that's one right there, and that's one right there. So I have them all over my house, and thank God, in six years, they have not been used.
How do they get activated? I know sometimes it's.
It's one of those that has a one-hundred-and-thirty-five degree temperature sensor on, so if the wife is on high.
So no, no smoke alarm going off and everything getting wet?
That's not my theory. That's our, our kitchen stove right here. If I mess up and probably bake it too long, it blazes up, that head right there is going to activate, most likely put the fire out, and we'll be done with it right there. I go out in the garage, turn the valve off, I'd probably go ahead and call the fire department over at my home, and let them check it out, will the fire engine can run, will squeeze you up the water, we'll be about done.
Not bad. All right, anybody else have any questions? We appreciate your, oh, go, sorry, go ahead.
I'm going to tell you right up front, and he's not angry to say it, but, and I purposely really hadn't talked to him, because I really don't feel, Hana here asked me to do the study at Josh's request, and I love him, chief, we, we know him for a long time, but we did not collaborate on this here, except I sent him a survey of all this information that most of the time departments can't even get together. And within a matter of a week or two, he had that whole thing back, I thought, he couldn't have done that that quick, nobody ever has. But he has the data there, it's, they really drive the department data-driven. You've got twenty-nine firefighters, they're all certified, man, look at all these certifications your people have earned. You've got much to be proud of. There's one thing y'all didn't ask me to study that I, I do want to just touch on real quick, and I'm kind of sitting on my. Y'all asked me to study the, um, the rank structure. Of course, there's not really an NFPA standard on how many chiefs and how many not chiefs, but there is a standard on each of the fire companies needing an officer. You do have one fire company, per shift, they don't have an officer, and it's your ladder downtown, uh, at Station One, it's got two firefighters, the best I can get off, assigned to that, so if they ran all the time or responded all the time to engines or the captain, that would probably be appropriate, but the en, but the engine runs independent and the ladder runs independent. So I would recommend somebody to be responsible for that unit, because if somebody on that unit gets injured or bad decisions made, that's going to be the first bonding that OSHA or NIOSH or one of those people that come in and it's, that determine cause and origin of our accidents and things is going to. So the way they're currently laid out, and I just, I just think this has so much to do with firefighter safety. You have the chief, you have your admin captain, trainer officer, your engine one, that person's also a ship captain, that one, the whole ship. Engine one has an engineer and a couple of firefighters, you have ladder one that has you with two firefighters, and then you have engine two, uh, the station two with an engineer and a firefighter. So just so, I just wanted to explain, because sometimes it's hard to write things, or you'll understand, but it talks about each company should, you know, I believe it's right here. Anyway, it just says each company should have an officer, and then the way I would recommend, and up to your chain again, would be this, and the first improvement, you'd still have the ship captain, engineer firefighter, you put a lieutenant on ladder one, and have a bona fide engineer and firefighter. And then engine two would have a lieutenant, engineer, and two firefighters. Then the next upgrade, you do your fourth person on ladder one, and then you would have three full-person companies.
Answering calls.
Now, the only other anomaly, and I'm just going, this is three, chief, I'm not one who's armed to do it.
Okay.
With your ship captain, you've got a logical captain running here, you've got lieutenants acting through that captain. With your admin captain, I just think at some point, somebody needs to think about making that like an assistant chief or a deputy chief or something of that nature. People in that role, they can do training, they can do fire marshal work, they can do a lot of different things, but with a captain rank, sometimes it holds them back from professional credentials and things. Yeah, my chief fire officer, the information, you have to be a chief officer to even try to earn that, so, um, so, you know, when you have folks that do a chief level work, I suggest that you consider that at some point. Again, that's pretty, that's an absolutely part of the study, I guess, but it was just something that stuck out. NFPA definitely looks at this part down here, if each company needs somebody responsible for the decisions that are made. Does that make sense? I mean, it makes common sense, but just because this person is a lieutenant, don't mean they don't fight fire, they can still fight fire, they can still do all these things, but when somebody needs to make a decision, it's there to be.
And that can't be an engineer, or?
Uh, I got one department I work with, they're just really strapped for money, they wrote a policy that, you know, the, um, the most senior firefighter on that truck is in charge, and the second most senior person drives and operates the thing. That's the next best thing, but, you know, still, that's going to be brought into question unfortunately if you have a minor due to death or a serious injury, or they arrive on scene first to a fire, or some sort of incident, make a fat decision or no decision. A no decision is a decision, if you don't know. I had a bona fide fire officer one time that arrived on, and I asked him that call, and just said, we'll be standing by for the ship commander to get here, and, you know, he was seven minutes away, and I was ready to just fire that guy because he was an officer, he's supposed to be making a decision. No decision is a decision, and it costs people their lives when you do that. But anyway, I thank y'all for having me, and I thank Hana for allowing me to come here and do this for you. I appreciate you letting us through all this on this.
Well, I didn't know you had, I didn't know you put this together, I thought we were, yeah, we, you gave us that nice report, and I thought we were just here to ask, you know, talk to you about it.
Y'all got my contact information, either y'all do or Hana does, I'm, you know, I, I feel like it's just, um.
Can you send this as well? Is that okay?
Thank you.
Anyway, I'm, I'm really proud of y'all, I'm really proud of you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, and thanks to Chief Mitchell for putting together a good fire.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, we are not very far along, and a long way to go now. So let's, let's just move right along. Next item is temporary full-time police officer position. We have a memo from Elaine explaining.
This was something I asked about.
Okay.
Is, it's okay if I?
Yes, go ahead.
So, um, just in discussion, make it shared with me, I mean, we know that we're coming off of several people leaving for the SSO positions, and our department has pulled together and they're covering shifts and they're working devils, and now we're coming up on a time period where they're most likely having two retirements between now and the end of the budget year. And my thought was, is if we could create a position that would be good for, through the end of the budget year, we, there wouldn't have to be that lapse of time, because right now, Mike has, Chief Williams has so many positions allocated to him, he has to wait for somebody to retire before he can hire for that position, and then if it's somebody that's already certified, they do have, from what I can tell, three, four weeks of stuff that they have to take care of before they're actually on shift. And that then puts more pressure on the other people on that shift to work extra hours yet again, too. So I thought if there was a way that we could afford to create a position to help through the transition of two more officers retiring, plus kind of level out what they've been going through the past several months, it's one thing that we could do. So I looked at it financially, and Elaine had pulled some numbers, and I can let her talk now.
All right.
So I did go through the, the timeframe when our two officers left, we had a new hire start directly after one left, but the positions have been vacant, and so looking over at the time, for total vacancy of these positions that we have budgeted for, it leaves us thirty-seven weeks of budgeted salary and benefits available. So for the temporary police officer, we would need nine months or thirty-six weeks of salary and benefits to start for October of twenty-two, for at a rate of twenty-one dollars and one cents per hour. So we have got in the budget, the funds to provide for a temporary police officer position through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
So then it would be like a temp to perm?
Temp to perm, yes.
I think that sounds like a great solution.
Yeah, especially.
No brainer to me.
It's, seems to be already budgeted, so there's really no changes necessary.
Okay. And I just, in situations that we've seen the police department face, again, with those SSO positions opening, and creating some openings in our department, I just felt that there wasn't, like, we can't fill in on a shift, like, that would be bad, but this is something we can actually do, is allocate an additional position through the end of the, end of the paid, or end of the budget year.
So when you say it's, it's temporary until somebody retires, and then we can make that position permanent to replace the retired person right off the bat?
Yeah, basically, the temporary part is that the full-time police officer position is only active until the end of this budget year. I mean, if we find efficiencies along the way, where, I mean, I know Chief Williams has asked several times over the past six or seven years for another officer, but hasn't been able to get it, so is there some way that we find that extra funding and it becomes a permanent position in the budget? I'm going to be pushing for that, but I don't know what that looks like yet. So this, the temporary part of this is that, that this position is only good till the end of the budget year.
Okay. All right.
So by way of resolution, for next, we, we'll put all this, the words into a resolution for, for all the positions.
It'd be great. Thank you. Thank you for looking up that information.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next item is the TOSHA consultative service.
Yes, so I came across, TOSHA offers a consultative service that is free of charge and helps the, the OSHA department to identify, you know, some things within the facilities, and specifically, some things that I, I cannot see immediately as I do inspections, is, you know, air quality or mold spores, and they have industrial hygienists on staff that will be able to assist me with that. And then it would also assist me in developing, you know, a five-year plan, and, and how to approach the overall, you know, maintenance and upkeep of not only the exterior parts of the buildings, but the interior parts of the building. And it's, and it is, it's a confidential service that they provide to us, so it's not attribute, and it's confidential, and they provide, provide you with a report, and then we're able to work from that report.
So if they find something that's in violation of their standards, they're not going to issue us?
Our consultants will not issue citations or protest penalties.
What do they do? They, do they send somebody out right away to issue?
Yes.
Or do they give us some time to resolve?
Our consultants won't, but somebody else will drive up shortly after.
But it, it, you know, my understanding is that if it's a, it's a gross violation, if they give you the opportunity to fix it on sight, so, but if you're completely dismissive of it, you're like, oh, I'll get to it sometime, and that's when I, that's when they'll, they'll make the report.
Okay.
Well, if we have gross violations, we need to fix them, so.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, because that's serious stuff.
Yes.
I'm hope, hopefully they don't find much of anything, but.
Yeah, I mean, this sounds like a good idea, and we'll definitely help you in, in developing a plan of action, and that's something we need to do, so.
Yes.
Thank you for finding this.
Do, do we need a resolution to have you go into this? Because I see it looks like there is, like, an official agreement, or official application?
Yes, sir.
I would think it's a good idea.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next item is reallocation of funds. Next item is reallocation of funds. There's a proposal for an ordinance to amend, uh, the budget to reallocate some of the funds, uh, because our fire chief thankfully was able to save some money on one expenditure. We can reallocate those extra funds to other, um, needed items. Does anybody have any objection to this?
Nope.
No, I think it's great.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
And just, oh, no, the amount for the election cost have decreased. We, we've got some money back from those election costs, and they sent us a new amended bill, so, which is less than the original bill.
Oh, good.
So that new total would be seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents.
Can you say that again?
Seven thousand, seven hundred, thirty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents.
Okay.
And then, so that would leave us now a difference out there of two thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and five cents. But for the breathing air compressor, there is an electrical component, um, cost for installing it, that we didn't get an estimate yet, but we're looking to get about two thousand dollars for the electrical component, for the installation.
Okay. All right.
So you make all those, those changes to the numbers, but it, this, this just came in for the amended election cost. They gave us back a refund for the labor cost.
What are the clothing supplies in administration? Is that, uh, uniforms of some sort?
Yes, like Tom Singlemountain polo shirts for, for staff up here, and then, of course, whenever we go to events, any kind of conference, we have our Tom Singlemountain regalia on, so, you know, we look professional.
Okay. That's something we don't have currently, right?
No, we have none. I mean, I, I'd like to get tumblers, too.
Water department.
That's on it. But we just don't have, we didn't have anything in the budget, too, for some type of thing.
Well, and just to say that it's great that we got those crosswalks.
Yes.
And, and we're able to use these funds for that as well.
Yes, and thanks to Officer Fletcher for, you know, that grant, and putting that all that work together, and just having now the ability to pick up that additional cost there, maybe a day or so, yes.
I just got a call Friday from the grant people. NESA would not allow those signs to be purchased. They, they said that school zone signs does not fit what they're going for.
Okay.
Wow.
Just wasn't that one?
Yes. Yeah, I had to do a bunch of reworking on the grants today.
But there would be a possibility for more of, like, the speed limit signs, the speed reader signs?
Yeah, I do have the grant for a signage, like, we wanna have a change for a little bit, but this one will be so empowered, so it will run indefinitely as long as it's on.
And those are...
Like, but I, I already had that in there, and we'd also talked about possibly going to e-citations, so what I redone with the other funds is, I put it into printers for the cars, in case we do go to e-citations inside the grant.
Okay. Well? All right, well, we'll, we'll...
Revisit that.
Yeah, revisit that. Okay. We, uh... This looks like we've got a memo about the HVAC system that we addressed earlier.
Yeah.
Right? Funds for the el- no, that says funds for the elevator.
So, um...
But the memos about... Oh, I see, okay. It's two purposes.
Harry and I had a meeting with J&amp;J Construction via phone the other day, and discussing the elevator repairs, and J&amp;J Construction has agreed to pay for the repairs to the elevator.
Great.
Well, what?
Yes, fantastic.
Yeah, okay.
They want, they want to, you know, get our elevator running, and they, I mean, they graciously offer to pay for the repairs.
That's so good of them.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you. Thanks to you both. All right, well, that's perfect.
Fantastic.
Yeah. So let's, let's not discuss that one too much. I always wanna sit down when you get a win.
Except the library board did, um, agree to pay the difference for the HVAC.
Okay, all right. So the next item is the fire department apparatus purchase.
I appreciate the updated information on this. I'm wondering if we're at a place where... Okay, I don't, I'll say it this way, I don't feel I'm at a place that I would be ready to make a budget amendment on this, so I'm wondering if this has best served a discussion when we get to that point, if anybody else is sharing my feeling on this. Like, I, I mean, I don't know. It depends how you all are feeling, 'cause it's not, it's currently not in the budget. It would need a budget amendment until we get a little bit further on in the year, seeing where we're at and what we're doing.
One, one reason I wanted to bring it up, well, I wrote this back in July, but, um, October thirty-first, they have another price increase of six and a half percent, which is fifty-six thousand dollars again. They've had one short, little, small price increase since we discussed this originally, so the price of the new apparatus now is about eight seventy-six. So six and a half percent of that will be about fifty-six thousand, again, on top of that, so we're over nine hundred thousand then, and then in February, they'll probably have another one, which is about a million bucks.
This is to replace which?
An engine. Engine two.
Engine two's ten years old.
It's, but, one thing that, by the time you order it, this is two years out before we get it.
I mean, that report we got said you're supposed to get fifteen years out of the engine, so why would we replace it at ten?
One of the problems we have is our reserve apparatus, which we're, we need. We've got one that we can't use, maybe use it in the most extreme emergency. And, like, a few weeks ago, we had two trucks down, where we had both, we were be, using both, but we were out of fire trucks at that point.
Is there a market for, I just, when I was reading that report, I was thinking, you know, he said that you're supposed to replace your reserve at, after twenty-five years. Your, your usable ones after fifteen. And I was wondering, is there a market for a fifteen-year-old fire truck that you could use for ten years in reserve?
Well, what we would do is get rid of our thirty-year-old truck.
Right, I understand, but if you didn't...
And move it, move that one into reserve.
But instead of replacing the ten-year truck that has five more usable years of life to it, is there a market for a fifteen-year truck, or a twenty-year truck that has five more years of life to replace the twenty-nine-year-old truck? Rather than buying a brand-new one right now to replace the ten-year-old truck and saying that one to reserve way early?
That is a possibility. I've seen situations where it's gone well.
Yeah.
Then I've seen situations where you've bought somebody else's problems.
Yeah, I, I get that, that's what you get with a useful...
And most of the time, these are all mechanical, and once they start to get age on them, things break.
Sounds like Memphis may be a place to look, since they go to a great fire department.
You know, we have, have one down every day, but, um, you know, you might be able to find one that's, I wouldn't buy a fifteen-year-old truck.
Yeah.
Not, not for reliability. Maybe, maybe a ten-year-old, 'cause that's when things really start breaking in more frequency. Fifteen, I think you're just buying somebody else's problems.
Yeah, okay. I, I just had that thought, because when I was looking at the, the trucks and everything, and knowing how expensive it is, especially right now, to buy a new truck, I thought, well, maybe that's something we need to look at. I don't know if there's, I didn't know if there's a market.
There, there is, there's trucks out there. You know, ten years old, maybe, would be something feasible, and you're still, you're, you're looking at probably a ten-year-old truck that's in great shape, that you could use, you're probably looking at two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, probably.
Could you, could you do some research and find in the area, and just let us know what you find?
Sure, absolutely.
That'd be great.
I can do that. That would not be hard. There's only about two companies in the United States that do it, so. There's just not that big of a market. Most, like, our truck, what we need to get rid of, it's scrap. So, I bet it's thirty years old, too.
Which one, that's the thirty-year-old?
And then our reserve aerial's rapidly approaching that age, so.
Yeah.
We're just a little behind.
Yeah. All, all right, well...
All righty.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is, um...
Street sweeper?
Street sweeper purchase? I didn't, I didn't think we had proposed a street sweeper purch- did we propose a street sweeper purchase?
This was put in the art funds wish list.
Uh-huh, okay.
It's, it's, uh, an important feature of our stormwater program.
Okay. Did, maybe we did? I, I don't, I just don't remember.
No, I don't. We would have to do a budget amendment on this one. And, and again, I don't know if we're at that place in the budget year where we could... And, and I realize that this is coming from art funds and not, uh, tax revenue, but if we were to add this, we would be increasing our, um, vehicle replacement fund, which is a tax revenue funded.
Actually, this is coming out of stormwater funds, and storm, uh, stormwater equipment and trucks do not have a vehicle replacement plan.
But they need one, clearly, because, I mean, like, the, if we go forward with something like this, the only reason we're able to do something like this is because we happen to get art funds. Right? So if we don't do anything on vehicle replacement, this will be the only street sweeper you could ever buy.
Well, I mean, I have proposed a vehicle replacement plan for stormwater, because we have pickup trucks and other things. It just never was done because of the funds, the stormwater.
And that's what I mean, and I did say by accident that it would be tax revenue funded, and it wouldn't be, it would be fee, uh, water, stormwater fee revenue, funded.
And we've actually included this in our five-year plan that we started about three years ago, and so we had this in there, plus replacement cost in the stormwater budget for when we, in our five-year plan.
So...
For this vehicle? Or for, are you talking, are we talking about vehicle replacement fund, or this vehicle?
This piece of equipment.
Okay.
We had in our five-year plan.
So does that mean we have the revenue from the water fu- the stormwater fund?
We added that in there, and that was included in our price, uh, our fee increases that we're building. So we get the thirty percent, you know, two years ago, and we got one more. And so the cost of this equipment and the replacement cost is in that plan and in those fees.
So it's being collected right now? And how much, like...
Well...
So if it's being collected now, and it was been in the plan for three years?
It's been in, actually, since we didn't get the increase started until, we've only had two years of increase. We've only had two years of it, yeah.
How much do, do you know about how much we have that's been accumulated over time?
I don't know what our stormwater plan is like at the moment. I know the tax bills are going out, and mostly stormwater fees will be on the tax bills, uh, but I do not know what our fund looks like.
And I think maybe that's, we should maybe ask to talk about this one when, once the revenue starts coming in, and we have a better idea about this, 'cause, I mean, like, if those fees could cover the five-year pay, the, like, the five-year plan?
The sixty-three.
The sixty-three? Then, like, again, you know, let's just wait until that revenue starts rolling in.
I do want to say that this is part of our stormwater plan that we submit to the state for, uh, cleaning our curbs and parking lots. We really need to keep our streets clean, that's part of our stormwater program, which is part of our plan that we sent to the state. And so that is something that we really need for our stormwater program, also just help keep our streets clean, especially after our lease season's coming up. It'd be nice to be able to go back behind those lease machines and get the street cleaned up, you know, further. And then we have the bike lane on timber lanes, that's a problem, and we have a hard time keeping that clean. Debris washing out of sidewalks, and, I mean, driveways and yards, and it keeps, it's hard to keep the bike lane clean.
So how long would this piece of equipment be usable? How many years?
Uh, I don't know.
I mean, do you know?
It's like a ten-year replacement period, probably. I think there's something we use it year-round.
Yes.
Year-round.
So...
Every day, once I got someone that offered it, and it does not require a CBO license either, which is good.
Yeah. So we've, we, this is part of our increased budget, or our, our increased fee, so we really...
This was rolled in?
Yeah, I mean, we told people, we're increasing your fee, this is one thing we told them we were going to provide for that increased fee.
So do you remember how much of that increased fee is for this piece of equipment?
I, I don't, because what we did is set our five-year plan, and those included not only capital purchases, but our projects, and so I really don't know.
So did it, like, when you say capital purchases, you had two hundred, three hundred thousand in for a street sweeper as part of that five years?
We did.
Like, fully paying for it upfront?
We had it in a, in the finance, the, the five-year finance, is the word we did it.
Okay. Okay, so you had the sixty-four thousand, something like that?
Yeah, right, the sixty-something thousand each year. So that's how we put it in the five-year plan for this lease option that we've got here, and that's how much we put in each year, uh, for this piece of equipment.
Well, I think this is, you know, if, if we're telling people that we're increasing your rates because we're gonna buy a piece of equipment, and we don't buy the piece of equipment, that's not really very fair, so, um, I think it'd be good for us to find out how much we have available right now, uh, and then come back and address this once we know that.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate the information. Okay, um, board applications, um, we have a number of, uh, board applications for two boards, um, the recycling project and the planning commission, um, and one application for the rec board, and one for the stormwater appeals board. We probably should just have, uh, resolutions available for next week, and if everybody can try to, if you're gonna call people, try to call them between now and then, uh, or, uh, at least read up on the applications. I don't know that it would serve us, uh, do much good to talk about if anybody right now, uh, at eight, ten. So we'll talk about that more, um, and have resolutions ready to go next week. Anybody have any other thoughts on that?
How many total seats is the recycling?
There's seven positions.
Seven.
We got one more, though. Does this list include the one more that we got just the other day?
Total eight?
Yes, total.
Yeah, there's eight for seven spots, yeah.
Yeah, so eight people for seven spots.
And how many openings do we have on the planning commission?
Two.
Do we have two? Do we have still two? We now have two?
That's gonna change as well, because you've got ten pres- preservation, it's gonna be submitted.
From you?
No. You're stuck with me, baby.
You have a chair, you cannot resign.
No, no, no. No, I'm just, I already spoke with him Thursday and the following morning, it's just a conflict, and then out of the time. So just reset, so it's, hey, you know, I think we're...
That makes two. That will make two.
That will make two.
Yeah, so we have one present, but we will have two.
Yeah.
Gotcha. All right, I was thinking you were saying, we have two, and we're gonna have one more. Mystery person who was gonna resign.
No.
Okay.
And I'll haul back up when we get there, that'll be sent to Elaine, um, direct, but he, he, he just... Direct, but he, he, it's, we just, yeah, we step away.
All right, that's fair enough. Okay.
Okay.
All right, so, so keep those in mind, so we're going to have to choose between, choose seven out of eight for the recycling project and two out of four for the planning commission. And I guess if he's going to resign, we need to know before Monday so that we can.
I'll, I'll get his permit.
Yeah, okay.
Awesome.
All right, and we have an issue for speed limits, which I would like to table, and not that I don't want to talk about it, but it's late and I do want to get the police chief, actually, I thought the police chief had some things to talk about, but maybe I was wrong about that, but. Does anybody want to talk about it now?
No, I think we can table it tonight.
We can do.
I think that'd be great, I do.
All right. It's not that we don't care, but it's late and I think we need to at least have the police chief or someone who's got some information from the police side of it, maybe you?
Yeah, the, well, he, we're in agreement, he wanted to make a call.
I see.
The average on James Boulevard that we keep in is thirty miles an hour out of all the cars I give, the town manager, I reported today, that shows the number of cars, the number that was one over ten miles per hour, the number that was one over fifteen miles per hour. I believe it was like out of eight thousand, only seventeen cars in a seven-day period were going above fifteen miles an hour. I think it was two-hundred and twenty-two was between ten and fifteen miles per hour. But out of that, almost eight thousand cars, the average speed ended up in thirty miles per hour.
Wow, okay. So, would something like speed bumps be something to help? I mean, I know that there's a lot of concern from residents on James Boulevard about the speed, and I, data doesn't lie, so, so thirty miles per hour is thirty miles per hour.
Right.
But is there something else that we can do to, to support the citizens who feel like there's a need to do something to protect themselves?
In my opinion, if you can make the mountain flat.
If I can make the mountain flat?
Yep.
I cannot make the mountain flat.
Because, I mean, the hills and everything, I mean, you know, when we stop people, if, if they're coming off the hill, that's the number one thing they say, "I was going downhill."
So, can I ask you?
Uh huh.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What do you think about raising penalty fees? Like, that might be more of a deterrent, because, I mean, we're at cheap speed.
Correct.
Up here.
That is something that the council would have to look at and would also have to talk with the judge. Our court costs is one of the lowest in Hammond County. There's only a certain amount of fee he can tack onto the speeding, so anything would have to be court costs.
Yeah.
Raised on there. That is something that you could look at, but then also it all depends on what happens in, on the court side.
Okay.
I think those flashing signs that are occasionally out there, that, out there that tell you what your speed is, to me, are, are a great way for people who, who don't realize that they're speeding to find out and they'll slow down. It, it, it works for me if I see it and I'm like, oh, I'll slow down. So if, there's certain parts of James Boulevard where it might be a little more hairy, where the sidewalk is closer to the road, or, you know, maybe we can use those more often.
Where you're going downhill.
Right. And like I said, that's something like, in the grant, one of the new signs that I got is solar-powered, so it's portable, just like the other one I had, except it does have the solar-powered part on it.
Yeah.
So, like I said, we can leave it out months at a time and it stay, stay lit up.
Yeah, it sounds like there's not, there's not necessarily a problem, but if there's a perceived problem, then maybe in certain spots, tempor, you know, not all the time, but it can be moved there to, to help.
Right. Yeah, and when, when you're, when you're on the side of the road, thirty miles an hour sometimes does feel like.
It feels fast.
Right.
That's, that was how I was getting ready to say. I mean, I walk on James all the time and, and I'm always mindful about my speed, but thirty miles per hour still feels.
Right.
Fast, you know, if you're, if you feel like you're in close proximity to an oncoming car.
So, so somebody that, if, even if they are going thirty, it, somebody may think they're doing forty-five, they think they're doing forty.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess, and is there no good reason to talk about lowering the speed to twenty-five miles per hour, like, at least from Thrasher to, to where James meets Five Points or what?
You could look at it, the, where you get into, like, I think with that, used to on the main road, you know, you come into town, it was forty. When you got up to Alt Road, it changed to thirty from Alt Road till Town Lemons, then it went back up to forty when you got into Walden's. That, we'd done that for about, I think it was about a year or two years, and then they decided, you know, hey, let's just make it all thirty-five. So then the stretch of road made lower to thirty-five. You get into the thing of, oh, that's just a speed trap when you cert, certain areas at certain speeds. And that's how, that's how a lot of people perceive it. Even, you know, I've, I've been here twenty-three years, I was in the Explorers prior to that for ten years. That's something that Signal Mountain always has the distinction of, oh, it's just a speed trap. So like I said, and then if you're looking at just James Boulevard, it's like I was talking to council member Anderson, why is it just James Boulevard? You know, people on timber lanes, people complain all the time with the speed on timber lanes as well. So do you just need to lower it on James or should you just make town-wide twenty-five miles an hour?
Would, would, how much impact does five miles an hour change in a, in a speed limit?
As far as studies, I don't know. I would have to look to see if I could find it. I know when we went from forty to thirty-five, we didn't, you didn't, I didn't see much difference in people's speeding, driving habits.
Is, is there something else that we can do to support and to, like, to change the perception of the speed on that road?
Just, like I said, I mean, we can publish those studies that we get.
That'd be great.
Maybe something along with the town website, because like I said, I'll, I'll live them out there, they'll do a seven-day study, and I can move it to different parts of James Boulevard, so we can get more of a thing. I've had it before in the nine-hundred block, I've had it right there at Stratford Way, I've had it up by James Boulevard before. So like I said, I've, I've got a good area. I haven't had it on Old Town much, I had it on Texas over there, we had some complaints over on Texas. But like I said, you know, if I go sit over in Old Town where we did lower the speed limit to twenty-five, there's really not much difference in driving habits between it and the thirty mile an hour zone. If you ever have a free minute and you all want to come out and ride and we'll go sit somewheres and you see what the radar says.
I assume that there's, there's a, when school is letting out, there's got to be a, some sort of speed, or a school zone speed limit reduction, so that's helping for children that are walking to school.
Right, and you know, with Thrasher especially, you know, the way they enter now, they're only allowed to pick up kids one way, so from Thrasher to past Mount Orchard Path, it's line bumper to bumper, you can't speed.
Yeah.
You can't speed going northbound, but going southbound, you know, you're just stuck in traffic.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that, that's something that helps during that periods of time.
Yeah. Well, I, I think, you know, the public education is good, the speed studies are, are good to be able to keep on top of that, and then if we can, you know, put those temporary flashing speed limit signs out every now and then, that probably will help a lot of people.
The one I have now, it depends on the area I put it in, on how long it lasts. James Boulevard, I'm getting about two weeks out of it. On the highway, I get about four days, and then in a neighborhood, I get, I get about a month. So it's just, it's based on how many.
How much is a permanent flashing solar sign, like the ones we have?
The, I don't know, you'd have to check with the Reta on that. I know the one that I'm purchasing that has the solar power, that is portable, that you can move, I mean, you can leave it up every how long, but it's right at five thousand dollars.
Okay.
That's how much that is.
So why is the speed on down Maryland twenty-five?
Because the, it's not one of the, it's not James, it's not Timberlands, it's not Shaw Creek, that's just, it's a, all side roads. When the town, under Nordance, a long time ago, made all side streets twenty-five miles an hour. So that's why Maryland's twenty-five, because it's, it's not James.
It feels like it's an extension of James.
Right.
When you go down there and I'm like, no.
Yeah, but because it's called Maryland, it's a side road, so it's twenty-five.
It's considered a side road, but it actually isn't.
Correct.
And, and I feel, also think, like, I think some people kind of have the mentality, like, you know, the speed limit's thirty, I'd probably get away with driving thirty-five or whatever, like, but if the speed limit's twenty-five and they're going thirty, it doesn't, the difference between thirty and thirty-five.
I think what he's saying is he doesn't notice a difference when he goes on the twenty-five part in terms of actual speed, speed behavior. It's not, you might think people behave that way, but a lot of it has to do with whether you're going downhill, or.
Yes.
Is it a straightaway or a curve and?
And, and that's just it, you know, there, there's some spots you may sit and you'll never get anywhere because you have a sharp curve, but then you have that straightaway and that's where you, that's where, where they go.
I've got a, my neighbors might kill me, but we have, I, there's some history to this that predates when I moved into my house four years ago, but we have a solar permanent sign that's doing maybe little to no good on a very small side road that I can talk to you about. I don't know if you can move one to James. I don't. The only purpose it serves is my kids ride their bike by it to see how fast they're going.
And that's the problem, that's the problem, I think, with permanent signs at, at certain point, people are just used to.
Yeah. I think that that problem's been fairly well removed.
So, I mean, that, that's one of those things, that it's, if it's, if they say it all the time, then it becomes oblivious to them. So that's, that's one good thing about the portable signs, is you can put it in different spots.
Yeah.
They're like, oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, yeah, we appreciate you staying on top of the situation and educating those who you've talked to. I know you've talked to a lot of people about it already, so thank you for that.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, well, we did address that after all. Managers report?
Okay, just a couple of things, just to, to report, is that on Friday, we're going to be closing town hall early at eleven-thirty. We are having a software conversion for our property tax, going from Flex Gen to Next Gen, and which will, will be taking all of the day on Friday, possibly into the weekend for the conversion. So we'll be limited on what we can do as far as, you know, office payments and receipts. We still have, we'll still be able to receive checks, we'll be entering the phone up until eleven-thirty, but we'll be able to be reached on email, and we'll get that published out so everybody knows that we're going to be closing town hall at eleven-thirty. There's also staff appreciation barbecue at Alba's Park from eleven-thirty to four-thirty. And in recognition of, you know, the staff has gone through CPR certification, and that is just a force multiplier for the town. And so we have somebody who comes into town hall, for example, and they have some kind of event, we're able to now administer CPR. To, to our customers.
And it, and if I could just interject, it also goes bigger than that, though, too, because like, our public work staff is out in neighborhoods every day.
Absolutely.
And now they're CPI cert, CPR certified, our water department gentlemen are over in different areas of town every day, and there's that extra coverage there, too, I mean.
The librarian and staff, they're also CPR certified.
Yeah, so it's like, I, I don't want to miss any of the tortues, but it's like, it, this, this extra certification is in every corner of our town. And for that, I, I absolutely can't appreciate town staff enough to making the commitment.
And we are holding a makeup class on October fourteenth for anybody who had missed the regularly scheduled classes, and then also for our, our new hires is going to be in that. So he's out in all facilities as well. And then just lastly, this Thursday, we have another CMVO training. Jennifer, Katie and I will be gone to Knoxville for debt management.
Nice.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we're on to other business, communications and reports from the mayor and council, reports from committees or boards. None? All right. Signal Mountain Fire Department recognition, is there something about that?
I just wanted, because if you want to just come please and let me know, it's really important. It's a fire night, just quickly.
September eighth, there was a reception, recognition luncheon reception put on, actually it was more of a brunchen, because it was early in the day, put on by the Department of Commerce and Insurance, the State Fire Marshal's Office, for the anniversary of the Get Alarm Tennessee Program, which is the smoke detector program that several departments in the state, about five hundred departments in the state participate in. And they wanted, they were there to recognize the top performers of the program. And so we're in the top ten percent across the state, we were one of the top performers. The state held a contest called, what was it? Can't remember the name of the contest, but anyway, it was a smoke detector installation contest. We got number two in the state in that. We were beat by Harden County. It's hard to compete against a county when you got a municipality competing against counties. But also, we were also recognized for being one of the top performers for our entire community risk reduction effort, which Steve also mentioned in our, that, you know, we're out in the community every day, life safety home survey, smoke detector installations, we're at the schools. So anyway, it was nice, we got a nice recognition from the Fire Marshal's Office as being one of the top performers in the state.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Hang on, Chief Mitchell, I don't think you advertised it right. We are the number one municipality in the state.
Number, that's, that's a great, that's a great, I like that, number one municipality.
That's right.
Perfect. Congratulations.
You should have led with that.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good job to, to you and your staff, I know there's at least two of your staff here, thank you for that. Okay, is there anything else in other business?
I know that we did talk about doing a land, a native plant ordinance today, we're just taking that a month, it's not gone anywhere, we're just still collecting information. So, I just want to make sure people know I didn't forget.
Also, can, I don't know if there's anything to update, we don't, obviously not now, but on the sidewalk project, so we can just make sure we're still, that's on our minds? If we could have that on another agenda, just to get an update on that project? And, hold on, I wrote a note to myself for one other thing that I was, kept forgetting. I don't know where it is. Oh, I don't know if this is more of something for the planning commission, but the, the property that needed to be replatted, or they need to file another plat, I don't want us to forget that like they did in nineteen-seventy-eight.
Yes.
So, and I don't know if it's, you know, technically maybe isn't our responsibility to follow up, but I think we should follow up just so we don't lose anything there, so if you could talk to Chuck and just make sure he follows up with them to make, you know, get them to file, because he gave them the, the temporary ability to continue working on their house, but if they don't file the plat, then we're going to have a continuing problem that does need to be resolved. That is something that I think I mentioned in the last meeting about the planning commission, so, anyway, that's all for that. Okay, well, it is late and we all want to go home, so next meeting is October tenth, and we are adjourned. Thanks.
Goodness. [laughter] [inaudible] 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 [inaudible]